Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Obezo Martinez, here. Councilmember Mendoza, here. Councilmember Tucker.
Here.
Mayor Protim Amparano.
Here.
And Mayor Burnmore, here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
Mr. Merida, do we have any adjustments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we would ask that you pull item E three from the agenda for future consideration.
Thank you. Ms. Turner, do we have any action taken in closed session?
At this point, we don't because we have to continue the closed session, so I'll do the full report out immediately following.
Thank you. Public, item C, public appearances, matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the council in writing. Do we have Mr. Breland, please stand to the podium.
My name is Rick Breland, I live at twenty-four fifty-two O'Hare Avenue here in Imperial. I have a big problem. Everybody lives at Sky Ranch, pays into landscaping and lighting district. I used to sit on the council and everything was running fine out there. And then all of a sudden, it came up that the landscaping should be done under a contract with prevailing wage. It, the landscaping out there went to crap. The city decided they were gonna take it over, they did. I met with Mr. Merida and your Parks and Recreation person, and he said, "Don't worry, we're gonna take care of this, we've hired people, we're gonna get cleaned up." You cannot even walk down the sidewalk on Sheffield. There is dirt and sand on every sidewalk. There are dead plants throughout the neighborhood. I understand that it costs money, but there's a lot of money in that account. And to my un- understanding is that money was supposed to be used for the residents there. And I don't believe it's being used for the residents there, I think it's being used for the city's purpose to buy stuff and do things. The plants, that I was told that when I met with Tony, the director, and with Mr. Merida there at the park, we walked around, we talked about everything. Said, "Oh no, we're gonna get all the sprinklers and all the valves working, and we're gonna replace all the plants." Tomorrow, please drive through there and tell me if the plants have been replaced and if you think that that's appropriate for what we're paying. It's not ten dollars a month, it's quite a bit more. And I'm very upset that that place has gone from the way it used to look to the way it looks today. The dog park is another deal. I was hands-on in helping get the dog park built, myself and Mark Grant. There are places on the dog park on the re- on the retaining side, by the sidewalk, that the wash, the water has ran down through there because the retention along the sidewalk is gone. And what we're gonna have eventually is the sidewalk's gonna slide down the hill. I walk three and a half miles a day near my dog. I'm just asking you to drive out there, each one of you independently, and look and tell me if you think it's being maintained and taken care of. My phone number's in the deal. If you want my cell number, I'll give you that, but I want something done. If it's not done, then my next legal step would be legal action. And I don't wanna take that, I want, I want the city, because they said they were gonna take care of it, to have it taken care of. Because it's not being taken care of. It, it's pretty hard to kill an oleander, and there is twelve or fifteen of them that have just, I don't know if they're not being watered or if they're not being taken care of, they're dead. And like I said, you cannot walk down the north side of Sheffield because the plants have grown completely over the sidewalk. That's why I'm here, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Breland. Madam Clerk, did we receive any comments via email? Thank you, I did receive two emails for a public comment. And I'm gonna read them aloud. They're from a concerned resident named Alberto Sanchez. Dear City Council members and citizens of Imperial, I would know, like to know why the city council is allowing departments to run without department heads. Why are so many department heads out all of a sudden? Who have been with the city almost twenty years and in between? I pose the question, what are the two city managers doing or not doing? Could this be a potential mismanagement of public funds? Why is the city council not holding the individuals who are supposed to be managing the city accountable? Why does the city council encourage using public funds to pay for two city managers for a city with a population of twenty thousand? No other city in the Imperial Valley has two city managers if various departments can be run without department heads. Who's to say that two city managers are needed to, for a small city when neighboring cities that are larger in size only have one city manager? Why does the city of Imperial need an assistant city manager when much larger neighboring cities don't have that position at all? The citizens of Imperial deserve to know why we are paying double for the same position. Why are we paying two city managers and all, why all of a sudden we have departments without directors? Please address these inquiries as soon as possible, thank you, concerned resident Alberto Sanchez. Mr. Sanchez also submitted another comment. Good evening, City Council members and city of Imperial. I have been calling the assistant city manager for the last few months as directed by Parks Director Tony Lopez. To get a status update on the regional park, we have been promised for many moons now, to no avail. I find it rude and unprofessional that the assistant city manager has not returned any of my calls. All this money we pay the city managers for us citizens to be ignored. Where is accountability council for job performance? I wonder if it is because I am Hispanic that I am not given the time of day. Nonetheless, I request that the city council give the citizens a status update regarding the regional park project as soon as possible. Concerned resident Alberto Sanchez. So, and moving on, no other public comments. We're gonna move on to item D, consent agenda. All items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council in one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other person request that any item be considered separately, the item will be taken up at the time as determined by the mayor. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion. A second motion.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mendoza and a second by Councilmember Obezo Martinez, please vote. Motion carries four zero. Wait, oh, sorry. It's rumors. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to E, action items, discussion, action, approve, disapprove. Item E one, subject of, subject purchase of software for Motorola APX radios, Captain Sheffield.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, the Imperial Police Department is requesting authorization for the purchase of encryption software from Airwave Communications for six portable radios and one mobile radio. The department is currently going through, has gone through, I should say now, eh, the encryption process. And has found that these radios have old software and we're not able to en- encrypt them. Uh, the amount for the mobile radio is six hundred fifty-four dollars and forty-three cents. And the amount for the portable radio software is four thousand, uh, thirty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents, totaling four thousand six hundred ninety-one dollars and ten cents. In anticipation of other radios having similar issues, which we did, we ask you to approve an amount not to exceed eight thousand dollars in this project. I'll stand for any questions.
Council have any questions or comments about this?
I do. Why are, do, won't, don't we pay into E V E C A and R C S?
Yes.
Why are we paying for the encryption software they should be providing it?
So, that's a really good question. My first issue with this is that these radios that, okay, so initially, these are six radios that are on, on here. These radios were purchased, I'm gonna estimate maybe about seven, eight years ago, so I understand those.
Should have been flashed.
Right, and they were, and for whatever reason, we were told that this, the software needed to be upgraded, which, uh, we are currently in talks with Motorola to figure out why, who, what, how this happened and why weren't we informed. It was obvious to us that, that we wouldn't know until these radios were plugged into the computer system. And so that's how unfortunately we found out. Now, the problem that, uh, we have is that these other four radios were purchased a couple of years ago, literally two years ago with our new units. So that is the, my biggest heartache right now, and, uh, we are definitely gonna try to pinpoint this and why this happened.
It's my heartache here, my, not heartache, heartburn would be is that, they, they, somebody should have caught this. I'm not saying it's us, because I know that there was a process where all radios went through encryption. Oh, I'm sorry, all radios went through software upgrades about two years ago. Is when we all did them, whether they were the old Motorola X T Ss or X T L six thousands or five thousands, and then the APX, you guys are doing what, four thousand?
Six thousand.
You got six thousands, they all should have been the same way. So, was it a, was this something that should have been done through R C S and R C S failed to do it?
I don't wanna point fingers now because I don't have the answers to it.
Once we find the answers, are we gonna be reimbursed?
That's what, exactly what we're looking into, to see if we can be, uh, if these costs can be recovered through which, wherever this, this, wherever the ball is dropped.
Looking at it for the cost of this, you might as well just buy new radios again. But we have to have them. I'll make a motion to approve, nobody asks questions.
Question though, um, so what issues are they actually causing without this encryption, so like, does it?
So, uh, without the, so currently, we, all of our radios are encrypted now. Uh, they, they finished that process last week. Without the encryption, we can hear dispatch, we can't talk to dispatch. Encryption came down, uh, through D O J, where the whole state of California is gonna have to be encrypted. In, and, in order to, to not, um, put out people's personal database or security numbers over the air where someone with the scanner can, can listen to that. So that's what, where that came about, but those radios, that's the issue that they have because of the software, they can't be encrypted, and yes, we can use them to hear, but we cannot communicate.
Totally, thank you.
No, no problem.
I have a motion by Councilmember Amparano, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion by, uh, Mayor Protim Amparano and a second by Councilmember Mendoza, please vote. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to item E two, subject sanitary sewer service to properties outside city boundaries.
Good evening, Council, the item before you is a request for a sanitary sewer service to a property located outside city limits. The property is located on Nance Road as illustrated on U exhibit eight, and they will connect to an existing sewer main located at Wardington Road. And I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Okay, can you explain why, um, on Nance Road that no other houses can connect to it? To that one, because that one is, um, gravity, right, that they're connecting to?
The one they're connecting is gravity, the, the one along.
Which runs down the ber枝.
For main, it's a pressurized.
I just wanted the other people that are his neighbors not to be calling, not to be calling, yeah, I mean, you can call, but why, try and explain why they can't connect to that one.
Yes, that's.
That, that's, that's the one reason I'm asking that question.
Yes, it is a pressurized pipe and.
The rest one.
The one on natural, so the other ones, uh, gravity feet, so they will be able to connect to the one on Wardington.
Okay, so will the other ones be able to connect to the pressured one?
They, they won't, they will have to connect, um, to Wardington as well. Or if you're further south, you will have to connect to the lift station located on Brewer Road.
If I remember correctly, that set of lots right there adjacent to the house on the corner, that's considered county, correct? Okay.
This house is county.
Yeah, that particular house we built is county, the one on the corner is city.
City, correct.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanna get that out there, just before you start getting all kinds of calls. Thank you.
Not paying for it.
Not paying anything, all the permit application.
I'll make a motion, approve.
This property, like hook up to water also?
Um, they, they did, yes, they applied for a water condition almost a year ago.
Other just, now they're, they're doing the sewer. Second.
A motion by Councilmember Tucker and a second by Mayor Protim Amparano, please vote.
I'd like to verify that, that includes number one and number two.
Yes. carries five zero. And so with this, we're gonna move on to our special meeting agenda to continue with action items. So we're gonna move on to, it's item C one um, on the special meeting agenda, and it is, the subject is adoption of resolution number two thousand twenty-three dash zero six for the declaration of emergency in response to sinkhole at Anthony Redondo Memorial Park. Whose item is that?
Fine. Okay, um. I guess I can read this out, Monday, January thirty, public service responded to, uh, reported sinkhole near the storm drain diverted box at the Sky Ranch Park Bullet Field in Saddle Glen. Parks Department had confirmed it filtered twice before, and upon inspection, the sinkhole seemed to be four to five feet in diameter. Upon further investigation, the sinkhole has measured up to fourteen feet in depth and eight feet in diameter. The surrounding banks have, and continued to cave in, causing a public safety issue. Public services has since blocked off the area and determined the cause to be a result of a failing line that's in the city storm drain in the area. We are currently working with A and R Construction to resolve and make needed repairs to correct the issues. We're also, they're, they're in the process of, uh, obtaining. Uh, we're also, they're, they're in the process of, uh, obtaining parts and stuff like that. They're on another job. And as those things are coming in, when those pieces and parts come in, we'll, we'll, uh, start moving forward, uh, harder hole, the monument that's there is gonna need to be removed, and probably some of the landscaping is gonna have to be removed. Uh, unfortunately, but, uh, we'll work to make sure to get all that stuff put back in place after the repairs are made. Uh, stand for any questions?
Oh, I've asked a question before. Is this the same spot as last time? That happened in twenty sixteen? So I remember it was the only drain that was there. There was only cul- one culvert, one drain box that we had that was right behind there that collapsed. I remember this because I remember taking pictures of the location.
No, I was gonna say, it's, it's not in the exact same area, but we do believe it's caused by the same line of the one that you're talking about. Yes.
That part of the stuff that was fixed last time?
Uh, so, where, there's ever made last time, I think we were able to free up the line.
Well, last time we replaced the lines, it all collapsed. That was in twenty sixteen. I'll go back and look at my mother phone, because I have the pictures there.
I know, that, that's what brought us to the area to begin with, was the fact that the water wasn't flowing as it's designed. And it was sitting there pawning up, so, uh, Department had Mr. Lopez himself went out there to go and look at the area to see what we can do to fix it, because we have noticed on the, on the, uh, east end um, for during, uh, morning glory, that the sinkhole there was getting much larger. And the water was passing from, along the top, so there's another line that's also, uh, causing issues where we think that the box has collapsed, well, we can't see it, it's all underwater, but it's collapsed at that point, blocked off the line.
On the worse?
A and R.
Last time it was.
Army was here.
Yeah, I think.
I know that the initial system, uh, that goes around there, 'cause we, we're noticing that we have continual flow of water through there, but I guess there's a leach line that runs through that whole system that borders the canal also, and that's where our continuous flow of water is coming from, is from that leach line into that diverter box.
Kind of sort of what it was. I know that, well, obviously, there's not gonna be any warranty, but what happened last time that happened this time, and if there's anything that we can change?
I know, absolutely. That would be great. It's, it's a bla- it's a black corrugated, uh, drain pipe.
Same stuff last time.
That is collapsed, yeah, over the top.
The, um, and this is on an emergency contract, is A and R?
Yes.
And no cost yet? No estimate?
Do you have an estimated completion date?
We, so we gotta get parts. I mean, until we have parts, we can't even start, so.
A blank check.
Sure, no, I don't know. One of the things that this resolution does is that, uh, you're basically delegating to, to the city manager the ability to, uh, um, make, have the repairs done, well, without going to bid, by the very nature of the, that's the very nature of the emergency. The time ta- uh, taken to go to that process, so, um, I think in between Public Services, Parks, and City Manager's office, I'm, I, 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 I would hope my expectation is that it's not just gonna be a, a blank check. We'll keep an eye on.
Appreciate it.
What's happening. We're always trying to be frugal.
Absolutely. Appreciate that.
Do I have a second?
A second motion.
I have a motion by, uh, Mayor Protem Amparano and a second by Councilmember Obeso Martinez. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to item C two, subject acceptance of donation of ultraviolet disinfection model Trojan UV FIT seven-two AL seven-five equipment. UV equipment from Las Galinas Valley Sanitary District to the City of Imperial Public Services Department for use at wastewater treatment plant.
Um, but yes, we're, we ran into, uh, the, the blessing of saving over almost seven hundred thousand dollars, uh, by having some equipment donated to us. Um, it was, it's materials that are into another, another system, they're going back to a different type of disinfection. The engineers that we work with, um, also worked on that facility, and then they came across and said they had this equipment, which was pretty much designed for our, our current wastewater treatment facility. Uh, it wasn't put in in the initial, uh, system because of cost constraints. So at this time, we have the opportunity to go out and do that, uh, acquire this equipment as a donation to us. And right now, we're, we're estimating that the, the cost to the, the budget would be twelve thousand five hundred dollars, and that's gonna be for mobilization, uh, removal of the equipment, shipping, and for DMs, so.
Or that's still gonna save us a lot of money, so.
We're not wasting it on, we're sorry. Any other questions?
Do I have a motion? Do you have a second? I have a motion by Mayor Protem Amparano and a second by Councilmember Mendoza. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero. Since that is the completion of all of our action items, we're gonna go back to the old agenda for reports, um, department reports. Do we have any department reports tonight?
I just wanna give a, a quick public shout out. I know he's probably watching. Um, during this whole encryption process, we had one person in, in our department take the reins, um, of this entire project pretty much, uh, he busted his butt, and so I appreciate it. I know all the guys and girls appreciate what he did, and, uh, it's our PSO, Damon Harmon. This guy is super savvy about our radio system, so anytime I have a question, I go to him, and he normally always has the answer. He was definitely stumped on all the issues that came up. Um, but he did a really, really fantastic job at corralling everybody's radios and getting this whole thing done, so. Just a shout out to him and a great job.
Onto city manager report, Mister Merida?
Nothing.
Awesome. Moving on to mayor and council member reports. Um, Councilmember Mendoza?
Nothing huge. A big proportions to report. Uh, Councilmember, um, Obeso Martinez and myself can, attended the JPIA. As I, uh, the community may be aware, I think it was posted on the city's website, and we also attended remotely last time. So, we, lots of information, uh, flooded in the brain, and, uh, we're very, I'm very grateful to have had the opportunity to go. Um, as far as my committees, that, there's been no meeting since the last city council meeting, so.
Councilmember Tucker?
Um, no, I'm good.
Councilmember Obeso.
Like Stacy mentioned, um, I was very happy and brain, yeah, overloaded to attend the new mayors and council members academy, but it was nice to get to know the different, um, cities and council members and be able to network and then learn a lot about fiscal responsibility and, um, ethics and everything else associated with our new positions, so.
Uh, Mayor Protem Amparano?
Nope, nothing much to say, except for the hard work.
Um, and for myself, I attended the open house for both, um, our state senator Steve Padilla and, uh, Assembly Member Eduardo Garcia, as well as, uh, Councilmember Mendoza, just to talk to them a little bit about our, you know, always get their ear to talk about our projects and, you know, I would call them our infrastructure problems. You know, they gotta be annoyed hearing about our infrastructure with me at this point, but until they're fixed, I'm not gonna stop. So, um, I also met with the Doctor, um, Gina Nunez, who's the dean for SDSU to talk about how we can integrate and try to collaborate together for higher education, you know, within the city of Imperial. Um, and then most of all, I would like to invite everybody, oh, we also had a IID, uh, two-on-two meeting with, um, Director Eugenio and Director Doc Stater. Um, Councilmember, or Mayor Protem, uh, Amparano and myself had that meeting with them to talk about, again, collaboration within the city. Um, I think the one thing that we talked about and that we're gonna start moving on is getting, um, IID to install the lights um, for the Little League fields, 'cause we all know that Little League's coming up, so, um, if we could get staff to work with, um, coordinate with IID and figure out what lights need to be replaced, um, that would be really helpful. Make sure all those kids can see. Um, and then finally, I just wanna invite everybody to the tri-tip kickoff. Um, it's gonna be on the twenty-fifth. Uh, starts at five PM, five to nine, I believe. Um, and it's my favorite event, so I just hope everybody comes and has a good time. And with that being said, I wanna adjourn both meetings. Um, open session of this regular city council until the next regularly scheduled meeting at Wednesday, March first, two thousand twenty-three, at seven PM. Um, this meeting's adjourned, but we will be going back into closed session. Thank you, guys. I don't get a.
No gavel, right?
Thanks, everybody.